Clerk Seegrist could call the roll.
All right, trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record reflects that clerk Seegrist is here. Treasurer Slavens is absent. Trustee Sneddon.
Hello, everyone.
And supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Second. In favor of approving the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes that require approval. The first set is February 13th, 2018. Call for a motion to approve the minutes of that meeting.
Still moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second call for motion to approve the minutes of February 20th, 2018 minutes.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Now it's time in our agenda for citizens' non-agenda item comments. This would be our call for public comment. Citizens' non-agenda items. If you're here to discuss something that's on the agenda, for example, the sidewalk repair program or other items later in the agenda, there'll be an opportunity to speak at that time. So, right now, I'm looking for any citizens' non-agenda item. Yes, Mr. Miller, please?
George Miller, and there's been an issue on Sheldon Road through the township. I've complained about it many times, on Sheldon Road. Flooding over there at approximately Cherry Hill and Sheldon Road. And the guard rail at Palmer Road on the east side leaning on a 45-degree angle. I'd like to know why. It's ready to fall in a ditch, why it's not repaired. Hagerty Road was flooded, Lots Road was flooded around Cherry Hill the other day. There were signs out. I'd like to know on potholes from Hilly Road, from Palmer to Joy, it's bad. Sheldon is bad, you can't even get down it hardly, from Cherry Hill to Joy Road. The same way with Morton Taylor, from Ford to Joy Road. I don't know how Hagerty is. I'd like to know where the crews are. We, I drive around the township every now and then, retired, and I don't see them. Also, one other issue I'd like to deal, I got a letter from the township on the dump facility. They, correct me if I'm wrong, best to my recollection here, has stated in a letter that the town, the waste hauler cannot walk away from it after 30 years. They, after, if it's not polluting, the water or the air, after 30 years, they get their bond back, and they can walk away from it, like I've said, and not pay taxes, and it goes back to the county. And if one municipality and the other can't, will lose tax revenue on that facility. They can't, if they choose to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So, Tim, if we could do a follow-up on Sheldon, Cherry Hill flooding and guard rail, I appreciate it. In terms of potholes, the county has been out, not fast enough by anybody's taste. Not fast enough, quick enough, not good enough. We are in daily communication with county, our state reps. We are seeing some of the potholes filled, but again, not, not quick enough. Are there any additional public comments? Any additional public comments? Yes, sir, please. I'd ask that you approach the podium. We like to limit public comments, sir, to three minutes, and ask your name and address, if you could, please.
My name is William Asper. My address is 44273 Southumberland Circle. In regards to what the man was saying just earlier, I understand that Wayne County is responsible for all township roads in Wayne County. The, and they get all the money from the state. Wayne County has a rule that they have to accept the lowest bid. When you're going to accept the lowest bid, you're going to get the lowest quality. That makes sense. So, I was thinking since Canton, we have money here. Plymouth, they have their issues, they have money there. Northville, same thing. Why don't we have a program where we take care of our roads, or at least help Wayne County out? Because on Morton Taylor, between Joy and Warren, you guys had four cars on the side of the road with a flat tire. There's no excuse for why a city with, I'm assuming, quite a bit of money, is having these issues. I mean, I just, I don't see why nothing has been implemented to remedy this, instead of waiting for Wayne County. It just doesn't make sense to me. And I'm sure it does make sense to all these other people as well.
Thank you. Just a very brief response is, we do actually have a cross-section of the community that represents a pretty good mix from the community, that residents, business owners, interfaith group participants, from north, south, east, west, central Canton. There's about 20 or so folks meeting. Summer Foster is leading that group. They are getting very close to making, it's a Roads Task Force, and they're close to making recommendations to the township board to do something. What that something is going to be, what it's going to look like, I have no idea. I can tell you that cityhood is one of the topics that's been broached, whether or not Canton should become a city. But there are a lot of pros and cons with everything that we will be considering, so I, all I can say is stay tuned, or come. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, call for a motion to payment, for the payment of the bills. Treasurer Slavens is now with us, so if somebody else could.
Make a motion that we pay our bills this meeting.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Very good. Now, we will have a public hearing, and we should probably go to, let's see, is a resolution to open? All right, we've got public hearing number one. Consider holding public hearing for the 2018 sidewalk repair program.
Allow me one moment, Mr. Supervisor. My PDF crashed.
I'll do is go ahead and call for a specific motion. And there's the first motion here is, I would like to call for a motion to move to open the public hearing, to hear comments on the sidewalk, on the necessity of sidewalk repair pursuant to the township sidewalk ordinances, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80, Public Acts of 1989.
Want me to make the motion if, to the clerk?
Support.
Good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Tim, could you lead us?
Sure. So, we're going to follow a similar format to what we've done over the last, I guess, 15 years. And that is, we're going to open with just a short presentation identifying a little bit of background on the program, what defects look like, and then what the program's going to look like going forward. But before I do that, I just wanted to introduce Erika Hildagel. She's standing at the back of the room beside all those fine police officers. Erika is our engineer, from Engineering Services, that is responsible for this program, and has been responsible for many years, done a great job. If any resident is here tonight because they're disputing how their sidewalk was marked, whether it should be marked differently, and you would like a reinspection, as soon as the public hearing's over, please go see Erika. She's going to stick around a little bit. She'll get your name and address, and within the next probably week to 10 days, we'll have an inspector come out and take a look at it. There are, or I should say, there, yeah, there are over 1,300 properties in this year's program. It's a bigger program than we've had in the past. And as one can appreciate with inspecting that much sidewalk, periodically, we're going to make a mistake, but we recognize that, and we're willing to give the benefit of the doubt to the residents and the property owners, so we'll go out and re-inspect those for you, should you have a concern. So, Erika will handle that at the conclusion of the public hearing. So, just for some background, Canton Township was the, kind of the landmark case where the Michigan Supreme Court ruled against us in 1997, making townships responsible for sidewalks in their community. As a result of that lawsuit, Canton Township established a sidewalk repair ordinance and a sidewalk repair program in 1999, and we've been operating under that program since that time. The first cycle of the program covered 16 years. We kind of went from oldest subdivision in the, in the community to the newest subdivision. And during that time period, we inspected, as you can see, over 16,000 parcels. We redesigned the program at the conclusion of the first cycle, and now we're trying to accomplish the program in under 10 years. And we think we can do that because we captured a number of defects on that first round. So, if you were assessed over the last three or four years under the old program, and now we're back again in your neighborhood, that perhaps explains, to some degree, why we're back. We changed from doing oldest to newest, to breaking it down in zones. And by breaking it down in zones, we get a better price, and it's more efficient and less disruptive to the community. So, these are the 10 zones that have been broken down. As you can see, 2016, there was no program because of the cost from the bid, the sole bid that we received, so we suspended it in that year. Then last year, because of budget funds, we were only able to do about half of the program that was, that was proposed. So, this year, with a budget amendment that is being recommended to the board in a later item, we're going to complete Zone 2, and also take on Zone 3. So, concerns, as they come in, are handled through service requests. We track those with software, so we know exactly what property is requesting a reinspection, whether or not there's been a history of problems with defects on those sidewalks. So, we have good data on all these locations. And our inspectors go out the year before the program and pre-mark, then come back and mark again to, to determine the exact scope of, of the work in each given year. We have what we call the red dots and the green dots. If it's painted with a red dot in front of your property, then that's a township responsibility, and a green dot is the responsibility of the resident. You can find more information in Chapter 62 of our ordinances, if you need a real boring read. There's lots of information under Chapter 62. And we also have some additional information on the township website. So, what do defects look like? Here's just a few examples. I'm going to roll through these pretty quickly. This is displacement of a, of a slab along this joint of 3/4 of an inch or greater, which is a trip, a trip hazard. This is spalling of the sidewalk, where the surface of the sidewalk kind of delaminates and creates a very rough surface, which is a trip hazard primarily for the blind and disabled of the community. Spider cracking. You can see various cracks that are forming here in the, in the shape of a spider web. That's another defect. Longitudinal cracks, as you can see here, a big longitudinal crack in the middle of the sidewalk, and then a, a transverse crack right here. These are also defects under the ordinance. Ponding of water. You can see here, the sidewalk's sloping backwards towards where this pole is, and it's ponding water, if that freezes, or even if it's just deep water, it creates a hazard for pedestrians using the sidewalk. Back pitch or back slope, similar to ponding. This one's being pushed up by a tree that was built between the curb and the sidewalk. This, too, is a defect under the ordinance. Utility damage. These are electrical utilities or communication utilities that have come in and damaged the right-of-way here, obviously damaged a big section of sidewalk. If they fail to repair it, then we include it in our program, and they actually pay us through utility franchise fees that are paid to the State of Michigan each year, which we recoup a portion of that money back. The township pays for a good amount of this program each year. These red dots, as marked as township responsibility, are from either sanitary water or storm sewer structure settlements. Here's a storm sewer manhole that is owned by Wayne County, but we cover at least storm sewers and sidewalks when it comes to the repairs of those. During our program, we're also required under federal law to bring sidewalks into compliance with what's called the American with Disability Act. It's also known as ADA, that acronym. This provides for safe egress and passage of individuals that, that have some form of disability. And we're required to upgrade what used to be called wheelchair ramps or accessible ramps and other crossings when we go in and do sidewalk programs. We also make some repairs to sidewalks that are in medians along roads and in common park areas that may have the responsibility of your homeowners association, so those are also part of the program, together with, again, meeting ADA requirements in those, those locations. Sidewalk apron, which is this area here between the sidewalk and the street, this apron area is the responsibility of the homeowner. In the case of our program, we only do repairs on public streets, the sidewalks along public streets, not in private subdivisions, that is, private associations. But in the case of having to repair the apron, it does require a permit from the Wayne County Department of Public Services. So, again, just recapping a little history, this started back in 1999, together with the gap program, which is where we also address accessibility issues, where there are major gaps in the sidewalk program. We have a certain amount of money each year targeted towards completing those gaps, and we do have a number of gaps that we're going to do, a few that roll over from last year's construction season, and a few that are budgeted for this year. We have completed about six miles of sidewalk gaps over the last roughly 15 years. Good place to look of where gaps need to be filled in, is you look for the goat paths, as we call them. These are the worn paths in the grass where people are walking on a regular basis. That's a real indicator that there's a potential risk to the township from a liability standpoint, so those gaps need to be addressed within a reasonable timeframe. There's an extensive public notification period for our program each year. Letters go out. Like I said, there was over 1,300 letters that went out, you know, in the last couple weeks, to all the affected residents and businesses. And today is kind of the last step, you might say, in the notification process, where, under the state law, we hold the public hearing. So, what happens next? The sidewalks that are the, the homeowner's responsibilities are to be repaired. Those are the ones with the green dots. If the resident so wishes to choose that, they can go ahead and do that. The provision is that you need to complete that work before our program starts in May. If you don't complete that work in May, then we'll just assume you're not going to do it. We'll take it on our contractor, which we get very favorable bids, very favorable pricing on, because we have a large program. Our contractor will take on that work on your behalf, and then you will be billed at the end of the tax season for the 2018 program. So, we anticipate our contractor to start work May 1st, because it's a little bit bigger program this year. We have to start a little bit earlier. Normally, we start around the beginning of June, just after Memorial Day, but Erika's recommendation, and we believe this is the, the right thing to do, is to start four weeks earlier this year to undertake the bigger, bigger project. So, just closing it out, this was a message that was written on, on a driveway after our crews went through, I should say, our contractors' crews went through and fixed all the repairs, and just kind of a sincere appreciation from the kids that lived at this house, that the sidewalks in front of their house were repaired. So, just a nice close to program from a couple of years ago. So, that's it, and now I think you can open the hearing to public comments. And as I mentioned, if you want your sidewalk re-inspected, it's not necessary to make a public comment tonight, unless you feel absolutely desirous that you have to do that, but definitely see Erika, or call engineering in the next couple of days at 394-5150, and request a reinspection.
Because I think there may be quite a few people, maybe not, interested in speaking tonight to address this program. Maybe what we could do is start at the back of the room, and then work forward, so anybody who's here to speak to the sidewalk program now would be the time. And if you don't mind, I guess, start forming a line towards the back, and that'll just move us a little bit quicker. And I'd ask that we limit to, still, again, three minutes, yes, sir? And asking for name and address. And, please, go right ahead, lead us off.
All right. Mitch Teal, 1633 Crestview Drive. Just had a quick question for, actually, two questions. Noticed that a lot of the areas that were, would be considered, I guess, defective, aren't being marked at all, and then a lot of us in our community are getting bills without having any green marks. Wanted to see a comment on that, as well as prioritizing kind of what all the other gentlemen were saying earlier in the comments, is potholes versus sidewalks, like which one's the real community problem here? Obviously, from a safety concern, I think potholes are more of a concern than sidewalks as right now, and just want to see what you guys were going to say on that part as well.
Okay, so, I'd certainly recommend that you talk to Erika and have her come out, if you're questioning what was painted, whether there are green dots, red dots, or mist dots. And engineering will have an inspector come out and take a look at it, even with you present, if, if you, if you so desire.
Because the easy response for that is if I get a bill and there's no dots, it's a whole lot easier than saying, hey, there's dots there.
Obviously, something sounds, sounds wrong with that, but we'll, we'll double-check it in the field.
If you give, we have your address, right? We have the name.
Correct.
Good.
A lot of our communities are seeing the same. Dots in areas where, yes, you can see those defective areas, other areas where there's no, no dots whatsoever, but people are getting billed, and you're like, did you guys just run out of paint? Like, obviously, on your pictures there, they're very clear, clearly marked, green and red, but there's not a clear indication of green and red in the, in our subdivision.
Yeah. The paint does fade. It's meant, meant to fade. But, again, I'd, I'd recommend that, recommend that we have the inspector go out and just double-check everything for you. And, and then the, the question of roads, you know, the roads funding and this funding, it's, you know, it's two different, two different pots. It's, you know, it's not money, the township money that is being contributed to this program is coming from the utility fund, because it's associated with repairs to the public utility system, so that's really kind of coming from your water and sewer rates ultimately. But, you know, the road money is road money that comes from gas taxes and vehicle registration money that goes to the State of Michigan, and then flows back to Wayne County.
What this gentleman was saying earlier is, if we have a little bit of utility money here, why can't we use that to deal with the problem we have today, which is potholes and the safety concern of everyone driving?
Legally, legally, the two pots can't be mixed. You can't use water and sewer money to fix roads. Absolutely, no, no.
It would just be a safety issue, that's the only thing, so, just kind of.
But, the, the road discussion, as supervisor Williams said, the road discussion is in, you know, it's the top priority of this board. I'm not speaking for the board, but clearly, it's the top priority of this board, and I hope a resolution will come, you know, in the, in the next couple of months from this task force.
Thank you. Ma'am? Please? Would you like to make comment? Yeah? Okay, to Erika? Okay, please, go ahead and do that now. You can go ahead. Sir?
Hello, again, my name is William Asper, 44273 Southumberland Circle, Canton 40187. So, in regards to the sidewalk program, I did a little bit of case law history, and, for example, mine, I have, I've lived there for 10 and a half years. I have a tree that is in the easement between the sidewalk and the road. That easement is the property of, is the city's or township's responsibility. In July 24th, 2007, this actually went all the way to the appellate court. The circuit court in Macomb County ruled that a tree whose roots are damaging the sewer lines and the sidewalks are the township or city's responsibility. Now, this past week, I received two letters, and they were basically for the slabs, about how much they would cost, those estimations you gave. In one of the pictures that the director showed, it showed the tree. It showed the roots damaging the sidewalk. But you guys are still trying to get that money from me. And I know last year, a neighbor of mine paid for himself. As I said, I have the case law. The case, it was Hill versus the City of Warren. And they found that the City of Warren has to pay for it. These were trees that the City of Warren planted in the easement, and they grew, and the roots had damaged the sidewalks and the sewers. The city wanted the resident to pay. Resident said, no, it's yours. The resident won, and even went to a, a class action. The city said, you don't have enough to do a class action. The appellate court disagreed. So, it was a class action settlement that the city had to do with the residents of the area. So, my thing is, why am I getting billed for this? Because it's been going on for a long time, as you guys have seen, how many over years? This was in 2007. So, I don't feel like I should have to pay it, because it's the tree's roots, which is your responsibility, and it's going to be a constant problem. And I'm in Carriage Hill subdivision. It's clay. It's clay sewer lines. So, the tree roots growing that, I've had to cut them out twice, myself. Well, two businesses, whoever did it, myself. But, that's another example of things that the city was supposed to be paying for, or the township, but they didn't do. So, that's the problem. Because I know that my neighbors are paying for this stuff, and really, it's Canton's responsibility to do so, because it's from the tree roots.
Thank you very much for your comments. I certainly am going to look into the case specifically. No, it's, we've got it on record, so.
Okay.
I'll ask Kristen to research it, and if, if we are misguided, we'll fix it.
Yeah, I would just suggest that maybe the inspector, whoever goes out and recolors everything, because, I don't know, I understand, some of them aren't from tree roots, but, like I said, my Carriage Hill subdivision, a lot of them are. Mine definitely is. It's been going on for 10 and a half years. I have pictures from previous years for it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could just clarify also, for the resident and the audience in, in general, that, that right-of-way area, the area where the street's located in a township, that is the property of Wayne County and responsibility of Wayne County. Townships have no responsibility for the right-of-way, no responsibility for the roads in their community. That's kind of one of the subtle and probably the major difference between a city and a township.
I understand that, but you guys are trying to build a resident, and there is case law that says it is not the resident's responsibility. If you guys want to blame Wayne County, do it all day, but it's not the resident's responsibility to fix it, because the tree does not belong to the resident, is in the easement, and it's what's causing the damage.
Debate that. You could debate that all night, sir.
That's fine. There's case law, and I can show it to both of you.
Yeah, no, no, we're going to dig into it.
Oh, definitely.
Thank you. Next? Hello?
Barker. I loved it. I live at 39735 Wales in Canton. We built our house in Canton in 1976, and I still remain in that house. A couple of issues that this other gentleman was mentioning as it regards to the trees. In our Brookside sub, we got a bunch of these ash trees, which were, are even to this day dangerous. But two years ago, I walk a lot, because as you probably can see, I'm not a child, and, and I have some physical issues. So, I was on our HOA board, and as it related to the trees, I actually walked our whole sub and wrote down the trees that either had low-hanging limbs or were pushing the sidewalk slabs up. And I gave that information to Canton, and Canton said that Wayne County was responsible. So, this was a spreadsheet of a whole lot of homes. We have 607 of them in Brookside, and there were So basically, I did all that work for nothing. Now we have some issues as it relates to the sidewalks. And my neighbor who just moved into my sub, she has a sidewalk that there was a tree planted on the easement. And the former owner of that home took down the top part of the tree, but the bottom, which is pushing the sidewalks up, this lady has to pay for now. There is new slabs over where you repaired it in 2004, but that tree was still there, so it lifted the sidewalk. I walked the sub a lot. I fell and broke a wrist from a sidewalk that I didn't see that came up in my face too fast. So we, I guess we want to know, my husband wanted our tree down after we paid for the slabs in 2004, and we took it down, as did my neighbors around me, there were three or four of them. We paid for that ourselves. Now, this lady, she's got another tree on her property that needs to come down because it's pushing that sidewalk up again. But she's saying, is it my responsibility to take down that tree? Nobody has an answer. I can't give her an answer, because I know what I did, but somebody told her that she has to replace that tree if she takes it down. Is that true?
In part, do you have a homeowners, you do have a homeowners association, you sit on the board. So you have bylaws and articles of incorporation and all that good stuff. In my subdivision, when the ash trees all died, it was the individual homeowners responsible to replace out in those easements, and the HOA enforced that. Township had nothing to do with it. But technically, we're back to, if it's in the easement, it's the county and decision to remove a tree, I.
The county will only remove a tree if it's posing imminent danger to the public. Otherwise, they, again, they cite lack of funds and defer any tree removal to the, to the local resident.
Wouldn't even trim low hanging limbs. And I know that was property owner, because that's what we did. And then when it got to be too much, we just said, we're pulling the tree. But can anybody tell my neighbor, if she removes the troublesome tree that she has in front of her house, does she have to put in another one?
Yeah, we can get her, we'll get her formal response so that she has it in writing. That's probably the best way.
Other comment, when you guys went around and you marked the sidewalks, I don't think it was last year, I think it was prior year. If you were to walk those sidewalks today, you'll see a lot of the marks have gone, been covered over with stuff. And so some of that needs to be re-investigated, I mean for safety purposes.
Thank you very much. And we will take note, Erica, thank you. Go ahead.
I guess as a matter of, just trying to follow what just happened, do we know who we would be contacting with formal information about the tree replacement?
If we could just get your neighbor's address and name, then we'd be happy to get you a letter responding formally to that. So you've got it in writing.
Ma'am, if, ma'am? Yeah, if you give it to Erica in the back, Erica in the back, she'll take your address. Perfect, very good. Sir, would you like to speak?
My name is Mike Burke, 1463 Ledgewood Drive. And I'm in Zone 3. And we received the letter last week with sidewalk repair, three blocks, $400. And I went outside and I looked and it says, the eye test, there was nothing there. But I'm not an expert. So I went online and I had a real tough time with your, the Canton online link, trying to find the code of ordinance. I still can't find it. It's probably, it might be there. I couldn't find it, it wasn't easy to get to. And I never did find it. But the explanation today gave me a reasonable look at what you're looking for in terms of the problems with the sidewalks. And I'm not an expert, the eye test, I didn't think any of those applied. So what I did is I took my dogs, I take, I walked them all the time. I went through three or four neighborhoods, which I continually do. And I spent this walk looking at the pavement and what's been marked. And I easily, easily saw 50, 50 plus, that were way out of range that mine wouldn't even come near. In terms of what I eye test, not an expert, but just the visual look, looked like they were seriously damaged. So in my mind, I'm looking at the process here. Not only do I have an issue with the three blocks of my, at my house for $400, which I don't see anything with, but in terms of the rest of the neighborhood, I'm all about safety. And I looked at the rest of the neighborhood and so many blocks and pavement issues that I thought were way out of whack, that were not marked. So it's a concern.
The neighborhoods you're walking are which?
I'm on Ledgewood, which is Stonegate, and north, south, across, which I think is Zone 2, and one over beyond the woods, I'm Horton Taylor. So I walked in for at least an hour, so I'm, and I'm not stopping and looking, I'm just giving them quick eye tests.
Let's get Erica your address, let her get it back over there, see what's going on. Erica or Tim, when did we go through and dot things? When did that happen? How many months ago or weeks ago?
We'll have Erica answer that one for us.
Zone 2, right, no, south of Cherry Hill, east of Hagerty, those sidewalks were marked in 2015. So a lot of those marks may have faded, but a lot of residents should have been aware that there was an issue. They did get a letter from us in 2016 informing them, for anybody that we marked, that they should do some type of temporary patching to avoid any displaced flags and people catching their toe and falling.
Very good, no, Erica, thank you. You've answered my question in full. That also tells me why, for the first time in nine years, sitting up here as a trustee before and now in the center seat, that it's been three years since we dotted the darned things. Yeah, they're going to get washed away and the cement's going to move around, so.
This one's, this is a very unique situation with Zone 2, if you'll recall. We marked those in 15, they were going to be part of the 16 program. We went forward with the program until such time that we got the bids. We got one bid, it was a contractor that had never done work in Canton. The bids came back twice the price of the 2015 program.
Why we killed it, right?
We made the conscious decision that that was not in the best interests of the residents. So we're playing catch-up right now, we recognize that, you know, there's, there's some issues with.
Have to go back through and redo neighborhood.
And for reference, the gentleman that just asked the question, it's Chapter 62 in our ordinance. So if you look online and look for Chapter 62, you should be able to find the sidewalk ordinance. And if you need help, call Engineering.
Also, it's kind of sad, but I've had better luck finding things inside Canton's website. When I Google it from the, I go to Google and say, find me Canton Township ordinance on sidewalks. And I get it a lot faster than if I try to go in through the township's website, which is something that is being looked at by the IT folks. So it's a little tip, use Google, you'll get there faster than, as opposed to the township sites. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional, sir?
I have an additional one.
Sure. Please approach, can you please approach, just so you know, at home?
Name and address and, and typically, sir, I see you're getting back in line again. We typically don't allow second shots, but we will tonight. It's a small group, relatively small.
I'm the half shot after the.
No, 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 I'm talking to the gentleman behind you, I'm sorry. Name and address again.
Doris Burke, 1463 Ledgewood. And he said he walked around different neighborhoods, but I walked around the block and I saw some of the dots. But then I did, and I took some pictures of some of the, some of the sidewalks that weren't marked at all. They should have been, they weren't. And, you know, ours was, is totally flat, so I just don't get it. I took a picture of that, too, and saw a bunch around the block that were raised, that weren't marked at all. So it's not just other neighborhoods, it's when we got ours, we saw, I saw some in the neighborhood, but I saw a lot that were missed, so.
It sounds like we're going to be back out there for sure.
FYI.
Thank you. And just the, where I enter here at Township Hall every day with the freeze and thaw, we've got a section where those cones are, and that has been moving almost an inch the last couple of weeks, up and down, up and down. So that's going to happen with the freeze thaw, and we get it, and three years is a very long time. Sir, go ahead.
Again, Mitch Teelin, 1633 Crestview. I just moved here a couple of months ago, so I'm sorry, I don't understand all the rules. But just a quick question for it. So if we're concerned about public safety and also the beautification of the area, if we did a survey in 2015 to mark all these areas, are we not concerned that things have changed in three years?
That's what I just got done saying, I'm very concerned. Yeah, we're going to be back out there. That's a no-brainer.
How long is that survey is going to take? And does that move our timetable back from having everything done in May to pushing it back to June or July or even next year? Because if you mark a dozen more spots, I want to have that opportunity to go ahead and bid out that job.
Well, Erica's got your address specifically, correct? She's going to be looking at your property specifically?
Yeah, I'm asking for my neighbors as well, because obviously a lot of things have changed in three years.
Yeah, the other, the other opportunity that you have is, you know, if you see something that did get missed inadvertently, or because of the delay in, in timing of this, it can always be added to a future years program under miscellaneous repairs. We have a category of miscellaneous where if a resident, say out on the west side of the community right now was complaining about a particular trip hazard, if we found that it was a serious enough defect, we could include it in this year's miscellaneous program. So we can certainly do that going forward as well, so that's another opportunity.
I guess that kind of goes in, when they do the inspection portion, if they find another spot, would you guys come back and fix that and then backbill me on my taxes then? Is that how that's going to work, or?
You're going to know what we're going to do with your property before we do it. Yes, sir. Is there additional public comment? Okay, ma'am? And then, sir, if, if you're, as we move forward, and I think it looks like we're into the second row, if you'd like to speak, let's stand and kind of get in line and get assembled so I can see where we're headed here. So please, name and address, please.
I saw, my name is Chin, address 41448, Greenwood Drive. So I saw the, for the saw manhole, it's marked right, right? But my, on my side we have the man, saw manhole, it's marked the green. So it's not my responsibility. Also, this, this last part is low, it's a lot of water come to my side way, it's kind of damaged my sidewalk, so you mark a lot. It charged me $3,000, it's a lot. You put the man, it's not my responsibility, you put the saw manhole on my sidewalk, also mark green, let me respond to all stuff? It's very unfair.
If you'd like to have Erica come back out, take another look.
I saw the saw manhole is right, right? The mark right, but they marked the green.
Let's, I suggested Erica come out and talk to you directly, so.
Also for the tree, I don't know how, how much tree you want to cut. I already cut the tree, I don't know how much tree you want to cut. On the sidewalk, the tree?
Yeah.
The branch, I don't know how much you want to cut. I see it's okay, I don't know how much you want to cut.
In terms of, you're talking the branches, how much to cut?
Yeah, branch, I don't know how much you want to cut.
The idea is, is if you can go through on a bike, standing on a bike, that's typically how high I cut my branches up. So the idea is for people walking or riding bikes on sidewalks to not get hit by your branches.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
So that's the height.
I already cut it, I don't know how much I should cut.
The inspector can, can look at that when they're, when they're out.
So please, let's get Erica your address, and she will come talk to you directly at your home. Sir?
My name is John DiMaggio, I am 210 South Sheldon. I've been a Canton resident since 76. In fact, I lived in the sub the other lady was talking about in Wales, I was on Meadow Lake. But now I'm here, I'm a 30-year Wayne County Roads employee who's retired, so I know a lot about concrete, I did a lot of it. I am a licensed builder and a concrete contractor here in Canton that does many communities here. This is a lot of concrete that's going on. I know Rotundo is one of the contractors, very good company. My question is, and I dealt with this a lot with MDOT, what is the quality of the concrete that's going in in these people's sidewalks? Because you can have 2,000 PSI concrete, 3,000, 4,000, and I know there's a spec for that, and I'm sure it's in there, the engineer has probably specced that out. But what is in place to make sure that you're getting that quality of concrete in your sidewalk? Because obviously, if you're paying for this yourself, you want that concrete to last 15, 20 years. Under ideal conditions, it can go longer than that. But if you don't know what you're getting in the first place, and if you're getting poor quality, say 2,000 PSI and it's specced at 4,000, that's not going to last that long. So I'm wondering, what is Canton doing and their engineering staff to make sure people are actually getting the quality of concrete that's specced?
Erica can explain to you afterwards, like what our inspection and testing, testing methods are.
Yes, is there a lab, is sent out, are the cylinders crushed and make sure that it's meeting the proper, you know, compressive strength at the proper amount of time, you know? The other question is, with sidewalks, too, you can really extend the life of them by using sealers. And I don't know if Canton has that in their contracts with, I mean, the ones I do, some I seal, some I don't. It just depends on what homeowners association or what condo association wants done. But it's an important factor that can extend the life of the concrete. And of course, the heaving thing, yeah, it's very common. The last question is, what is the warranty that these contractors put on their concrete? That, you know, how long will they warranty the concrete after they've completed the work? That against cracking, spalling? Because there's all kinds of different, I have poured so many pours, and I know hot days, cool days, the concrete can set fast, you can finish it when it's too wet, it can spall in a couple of years. So what is the warranty?
The warranty work is covered the following year.
Just one year. That's reasonable.
In terms of the deeper technical, Erica's your, your.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving from the back, moving forward, any additional public comment? I'm up to Row 34, sir, additional public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Bob Parker, 6806 Weatherfield, Canton. Really isn't dealing with sidewalks, I just wanted to comment about the tree situation. I had neighbors on both sides of me that their tree was dead in easement. Wayne County came out, marked a tree, and after the resident had called Wayne County Forestry Department, they came out, marked the tree, took the tree down, and about two weeks later, came in and ground the stumps up. Now, the issue is, it takes time. So they, they will do that, and they do, as all Wayne County seems to have, is time takes longer than you would expect. But the tree has to be dead. So just my.
Wayne County Forestry will do that in the neighborhoods.
They'll come and mark the tree, if you say it's dead.
Correct, they assess.
They're not going to come out and do it just for roots.
Right, they assess whether or not it's a potential threat to the public and then determine whether it needs to be taken down or not, so.
Right. Your neighbors did a good job chasing that down. Something new, good, thank you. Additional public comment? Additional public comment moving forward? I think that closes public comment. Can we call for a motion, second motion here?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing after hearing the comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs to the Township's sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989.
Second. Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's time for our consent calendar, which.
We have to address the resolution.
Ooh, very good. There's a third motion. Thank you, Clerk Segras, for.
Yeah, did we do the board comments?
Sure. Would you like to?
I just wanted to add, but I won't, I guess Erica's on, unless you know, Tim. So I know that.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. Tim, so I know that actually Ledgewood Drive was marked at the end of last year. It's in zone two, but it was marked at the end of last year. I know that because a lot of residents came to my door and said, we just got our sidewalks painted, and they wanted to know what it meant. So I walked it with them. So does that mean that it was painted in fifteen and then repainted again? They went through it again?
Yeah, I'd have to check with Erica on that and get back to you. I thought that it was just three that was painted most recently. So we'll double-check with Erica, and, or she can just email you after the.
Sounds like there's portions of two go all the way back to fifteen, so.
Yep. So two was the part that was deferred, and three is the, the new phase, which would have been pre-marked last fall in twenty seventeen. Sixteen was the year we skipped.
They weren't re-marked. They probably just finished it then.
Could be. Unless there are additional ones that came up that ended up getting marked, which were in, just coincidentally happened to be in the zone. That's also a possibility, but Erica would know.
Aren't we in zone three, though?
Well, I'm on Ledgewood Drive, which is the, where's three, sir?
Two is, two is east of I-275.
Or, or zone three.
So three is west of I-275.
Okay, in October.
Tim, what does a slab of sidewalk cost to repair?
Yeah, so the, the pricing, I, I just looked that up here. The, the pricing for this year, rolling here, is a four-inch sidewalk is six dollars per square foot, and the six-inch, which runs across your driveway, is six dollars and eighty-three cents per square foot. For comparison's sake, the city of Ann Arbor just took bids last week. Their prices came in at seven, seven dollars and forty-five cents per square foot for the four-inch, and upwards of nine dollars for the six-inch. And I just gave those to Erica right before the board meeting. But, so these are prices from last year that were carried forward, and we feel that they're, they're, they are very reasonable prices, and again, because we bid a pretty high quantity.
I also discovered today, if you're on the west side and you're asking for something to be redone that was done a few years ago, that, that value is eight fifty-eight per square foot. I just learned that this evening before the meeting. So if there's a outside zone two, zone three work that has to be done, there's a premium cost for getting the hard work.
For the miscellaneous ones, yeah, because there's additional travel time and mobilization, and you're not doing a lot of work in sequence along a particular street. You're, so definitely more cost for those.
Comments?
I know, just from walking my neighborhood, I had a hard time initially understanding the process of why one thing would be tagged as opposed to another. I actually had the opportunity to talk to Erica for about an hour, which was very beneficial. One was, what threw me off initially was the aprons, right? If, if there wa, if, if, if the sidewalk wasn't flagged, they wouldn't flag an apron. So I would see people's, the aprons of people's driveways that were in extreme disrepair, and I would see no green mark. And I would say to myself, this makes no sense, why this is green and this isn't green. And then when she said to me, if there's no connect, if the sidewalk isn't in disrepair, we would not flag the apron, but we would flag the apron only if the sidewalk is in disrepair. And once I, I, once I understood that and saw kind of how they went about doing it, as I walked my neighborhood, which is Cherry Hill Orchards, I got to kind of get a good feel for, oh, okay, now I get it. And I'm actually explaining to my wife while we're going out and walking the dog, and like, because she was initially was like, this makes no sense. I don't understand the process.
The lawsuit in ninety-seven was very specific to sidewalks.
Okay.
And not to driveway aprons, or driveways, or any other area. But, you know, technically, the homeowner has, you know, legal liability for any, any kind of concrete, even if it's, you know, your rear patio, or your step, or your sidewalk right in front of your house on the private property. You know, you have liability for that should even your best friend fall and hurt themselves and sue you, so.
I do have just a quick question for Director Foss. Things that are not in neighborhoods in those zones, those are also done under this program?
Yeah, those are the miscellaneous ones outside of zones two and three, and those are based on complaints. And like I mentioned, as those complaints come in, they get logged in the computers, so we know exactly the date, the time, and who complained about it, so that in the event we get sued, we've got a, a strong paper trail on when the township became knowledgeable of the defect. That's the legal term. And then, secondly, when the township corrected that defect.
Call for third motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt the attached resolution requiring replacement of sidewalks in zone two, Aziz Estates number one and two, Brookside Village number one through five, Brookside Village West, Camden Park, Dashar Heights, and Westfield Estates, zone three, Canton Country Acres, Century Farms, Cherry Hill Orchards, Echo Forest, Oakvale, Palmer Manor, Pheasant Creek, Pheasant Creek North, Pheasant Woods, Salem Manor, Sierra Heights number one and two, Stonegate, Villa Maria, Woodwind Estates. Miscellaneous locations as indicated and published in the Canton Eagle on February eighth, two thousand eighteen, and February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Second. Favor the motion as presented. State aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we open the public hearing with a motion? Should we not close the public hearing?
We already, that was motion number two.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, it'd be a good segue for anybody who does not wanna stay for the rest of the meeting. We've got fourteen additional items to cover tonight. Now's a good time to slide out, if you'd like to. Not that this isn't exciting stuff coming up, but now's a good segue. out in the hallway, if you have additional questions, please, related to sidewalk. Now it's time for the consent calendar, which we will read as one motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as written with item C-one, a resolution in recognition of SEMCOG, or Southeastern Michigan Council of Government's fiftieth anniversary. A, item C-two, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend chapter ninety-eight of the Canton Code of Ordinances to bring the ordinance into compliance with state law and to increase the size of the Planning Commission to nine members.
Second. Favor the motion as presented. State aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now it's time for our general calendar. Item G-one, consider approval of final plan development for Bickford of Canton Senior Living Facility.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of a final plan development for the Bickford of Canton Senior Living Facility located on the west side of Canton Center Road between Ford and Hanford Roads, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the conceptual development plan and development agreement made a recommendation to approve the, the request as it meets the criteria for a plan development, fulfills an identified need, and results in definite benefits to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the request for a final plan development for the Bickford of Canton Senior Living Facility proposed on the north, three point six-seven acres of tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Good. In terms of summary, we have the preliminary plan development was approved November twenty-seventeen, as stated by Clerk Segras and by the Township Board of Trustees. The proposed plan development consists of forty thousand seven hundred square feet for sixty-four living assisted, assisted living units on the three point six-seven acres. The project will provide a transitional use from the office and commercial uses on Canton Center to the single-family neighborhood to the west, which is less intense than what could be developed under the permitted commercial uses in the C-two district. I see that we have Mr. Ebby here from Bickford with us this evening, if the board has any questions. Maybe it'd be a good time to take a four-minute break, five-minute break, if that's acceptable.
Oh, I guess everybody's leaving? Is that what you're saying?
Guys, we're gonna take a four-minute, five-minute potty break here.
It's like, that's unusual.
No problem. All right. Okay, we're back in the, back in the mold. Let's see, we're missing, we got Tim, we got Wendy five cents for this one. I don't think we need Tim for this one.
Oh, Josh is just back there.
So, Anne Marie, would you like me to review the summary again? Or, this is the Bickford piece. We have Mr. Ebby in the audience. Are there any board questions or comments for Mr. Ebby?
I just have a process question, probably Tim or Pat, you can answer. Has this changed at all since the board approved it? I'm trying to pull it back up, my computer shut down.
Why don't, we have Mr., why don't we have Richard just give a, a quick summary?
Yes, there was a minor modification from the original proposal that was, was approved. We found it necessary to, to increase the size of the, our residence by about four units, giving us the returns that were necessary. Additionally, we did some redesign of the building that made it more advantageous for our residents and, and meet their needs. So there was, what happened was, we were below the forty thousand square feet, so we went in as a minor PUD. Then we, when we jumped a little bit over forty thousand square feet, then we had to go through the process again. So that's the reason you've seen me so frequently.
And the question I have, I'm sorry, did that answer you?
Thank you.
Okay, the, the parcel behind is.
That's residential.
Residential. Is there green space between you and the homes?
Yes, there is. There's a, a drainage esment there.
Drainage esment.
That's the, the Fellows Creek drainage esment.
Perfect, okay. Additional board questions or comments?
There was nothing from Planning Commission that we.
Basically, we had seen it, talked about the four units. I keep turning it off so I don't cough at everyone's ears. Yeah, so we basically talked about the sidewalks, and then you just had talked about the four, increasing four units, so we passed it without an issue.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Ebby. Item G-two, back in the saddle again. Consider approval for special land use and site plan for Life Covenant Church Outdoor Pavilion and Recreation Courts.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution for the approval of the special land use expansion for outdoor uses at Life Church. Whereas the project sponsor has requested an expansion of the special land use and site plan approval for Life Church located on the north side of Warren Road, west of Hagerty Road, to add an outdoor pavilion and sports courts. And whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the special land use criteria and site plan for the proposed outdoor pavilion and sport courts at Life Church, and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as, at its meeting, meeting, as it meets all applicable criteria. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the request for expansion of the special land use and site plan for Life Church for the purpose of adding an outdoor pavilion and recreation courts on the tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Second. The applicant is proposing to add an outdoor pavilion and several sports courts in vacant property they lease adjacent to the parking lot on the north side of Warren. The pavilion is a small band shelf to be used by youth groups for outdoor music and youth gathering in the evenings during warm weather months. I believe that this is also tied to an Eagle Scout recognition upon completion of the project, potentially, right? It has to go through the process of approval. So are there any board comments, questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, my only question is, I was just reading, I had read through the Planning Commission minutes, and there was a question about the noise for the residents. My only question was, were the residents notified?
Yeah, so the, the residents within the normal three-hundred-foot, you know, zone of this were notified, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Anne Marie, but the, the residents to the, to the west of this were outside of the three-hundred feet, but it was just cited at the Planning Commission that, you know, there's just, because of the outdoor use, there's some potential for, for concern about the noise. But perhaps the applicants could also just speak to, to that particular issue if you want more information.
Also, too, do we, does the township now not own the properties to the east, direct?
Not, not all of the properties. There's a couple.
Are two in between there?
There's at least one other property between here and there, but it was mostly the coves, which are located a little bit further west of there even. It was like three hundred yards or something, if I recall reading the, the minutes correctly.
What I did see in the notes was a comment to the effect that the, the, for music pavilion would be limited to Wednesdays and Sunday evenings. I don't, if anyone, someone could speak to that, please.
I'm David Garvey. I'm a junior at Salem High School. This is my brother.
I'm Steve Garvey. I'm a freshman at Salem High School.
And we, yeah, we, we were asked about the, the potential for sound impact at the last meeting that we were at. And we, we have used the, the parking lot just to the right there of the, where we're putting the pavilion for picnics and activities that have included music for years and years and years. We've never had any complaints. We've talked to Canton, they haven't had any issues. We've actually talked to some residents that live in that area just across Warren there, and they've said that it hasn't been an issue. We don't see that being an issue. And as for when it'll be used, likely just in daylight hours, Wednesday evenings, and maybe Saturday, Sunday evenings, and just really in the, in the summer months. It's a pretty limited use, but we expect it'll have a longer-term impact over the next however many years.
Appreciate that. And a little advice, and I, I think you did it here, is in your future developments, as you guys, you know, go on in life, and you do, if you, you know, next project's maybe a subdivision, do talk to the neighbors every time. It'll go a lot smoother for everybody. Smart move. Well done. Anne Marie?
They did a good job. And actually, if you guys wouldn't mind, I mean, this is your, this is your end stop. You had gone through the process of working with Jeff Guley and think, why don't you talk about that?
Very large campus, from what I remember, it's...
I just think it's a cool project, so congratulations.
We haven't voted yet.
Oh, well.
All right, uh, any additional board comments, questions? Uh, seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, well done, gentlemen. Consider approval of special land use for Primrose School of Canton Child Care Center.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of the special land use for a childcare facility for Primrose School of Canton. Whereas, the project sponsor has requested special land use approval for a childcare center for Primrose School of Canton located on the east side of Canton Center Road, south of Cherry Hill Road, and whereas, the Planning Commission reviewed the conceptual development plan and special land use criteria and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets the special land use and design criteria for a childcare center. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for special land use for a childcare center for Primrose School of Canton on part of tax parcel listed, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
In summary, thank you, Steve. Uh, in summary, the applicant is proposing to develop twelve thousand four hundred square foot preschool on the one point seven-two acres of a three-acre site located on the east Canton Center and Cherry Hill, as Clerk Segrist has stated. The site will be provided access to Canton Center from a private road utilizing existing curb cut that will serve the parcel directly on Canton Center, and an office site proposed between the vacant parcel and the proposed daycare center. The preliminary plan meets all the design standards for daycare, including setbacks and the buffers to existing residential uses to the east and south. The structure is a one-story brick building that fits within the surrounding residential areas, and we have with us today, um, you're, I don't think you're Andrew, Walters, Mr. Walters?
I'm here representing, it is Brian.
Okay, welcome Candace. Um, do we have any questions for? Are, are you gonna be the owner or the operator of the facility?
Oh, no, I'm, um, one of the residents that backed up to that.
Oh, very good, okay.
Do you have time for me then?
Now would be a great time to ask any questions.
Yeah, I thought that might be good. Um, Christina Petracca?
Uh, I'm s- I'm sorry, yeah, if we could get your name and address.
Yes, Christina Petracca, and I'm at four-five-two-eight-two Gerald Court in Canton.
In proximity to the development here, where are you?
Well, um, that's one of my concerns, because I have this, which shows a different site plan somewhat than here. So, we live right here, and this plan shows that basically the back of this will have the berm and the trees. I'm wondering, uh, if the rest of this is gonna continue to be woods of this nature until this is purchased, and then it will be cleared, or it's all gonna be cleared? Do you know how they're gonna do that?
Just real quick for the audience who was not able to pick up any of that conversation, cause she walked away from the microphone, the concern is for the, and I understand, the area of the parcel that is not, um, that is on the front part, part of, of the parcel, she, the question is, what is going to happen with that?
Is, is Tim, the section directly behind her, part of the project's property, or owned by somebody else?
Right, so the, the parcels and L-shaped, uh, or they call it a flag lot, um, you're, you've got a private road easement that's gonna come in here off of Canton Center Road, uh, this, the daycare is being built here at the far east end, there'll be another parcel right here, or another lot, uh, created right here for an office building in all probability, and then this is a separate owner here, so, I believe your home is this one here, correct?
Yes, but this, this particular piece that I got shows that, you know, the diagonal lines, I guess, on this one, is that what's going to be excavated? Because that one actually shows...
No, no, that's just, uh, that's a zoning map, is what that is. This is the actual site plan, so this actually shows the orientation of where the building is, which is kind of this buff yellow-colored, uh, box right here, and then the gray area is all the paving, this is gonna be parking lot, and then there'll be a common driveway here that'll serve the daycare and the parcel right here, because this is all under the same ownership, and then that'll come out to a little private road that runs along, uh, the property line with bushes that comes out to Canton Center Road, and if you look on the site, this curb cut on Canton Center Road has been here for a long time, so, uh, they're pretty much lining up the driveway with that existing curb cut in Canton Center Road. So, this is undeveloped, where the woods are, I think there's some woods here, I'm not sure what the plan is, um, maybe the representative from Atwell could, uh, speak to that if she knows, um, but, uh, the primary development is going to occur here at the backside, far east side, and then along the north property lines.
Atwell does not own the parcels today.
At, no, sorry, Atwell. Metro Consulting is the, uh, engineer that is doing the work on behalf of the developer, so...
I got, would tell me, someday you're gonna have an office behind you, that's...
Yeah, I was, I was told that might be the case, so whoever owns the parcel behind us is the same owner who's, who's building the daycare facility, is that correct?
Property owner only.
Can I just say, say something? I think the concern is the landscaping, um...
Well, yeah, there's a few...
Running east to west, are they not gonna run that farther, uh, to Canton Road? So, when they come in and clear out the underbrush, are they gonna clear out all that in that area, do you know?
That would be up to the developer of those properties to the west.
They're not the same, they're not the same owners, too, correct?
Yeah, but we will, through, uh, we'll let the engineer address, just give us her perspective for the development.
Hello, um, my name's Candace Brier, I'm with Metro Consulting Associates, we are the civil engineering consultants for this project. So, just a little backstory, this whole piece right now is one parcel. Primrose is, um, buying just the back portion of it for our development. The current owner is retaining, um, that front portion, as well as the portion, the kind of the little L-piece where the road is going to be. So, um, as part of our site plan process, we'll be submitting a land split application to separate it into two parcels. So, when we construct our daycare, um, all of our work will be happening on that piece that's basically shown within that westernmost box on the site plan. Um, the current owner is responsible for constructing that access road, um, which will probably happen the same time as our project is under construction, considering he doesn't have any other development going on on his piece that he's retaining at this point. Um, I can't speak for him and what he's going to do with the piece that he retains, my understanding is that he hopes to put an office building in there at some point, when and if that happens, I don't know. Um, I suspect that he'll leave that unclear, just as it is now, until he has a development plan in place, um, for that piece, but again, I, that's not our, that won't be our property, so I can't speak to what he does there. Um, and that, to your question, is why our landscaping stops where it does, because that's the limit of our, our property for Primrose.
Thanks for that clarification, I appreciate it, I thought it was actually a flag lot, and I guess I misunderstood our planner when I talked to him earlier today, but, uh, yeah, typically they would not clear an area that's not being developed at this time.
But then, so, yeah, but you would continue the berm probably, I mean, I mean, expand it down a little bit.
Right, it would be, it would be part of the, there is a, there, you would probably see a similar type of design with a berm of, uh, the similar width that exists on, uh, on the, um, Primrose, uh, site, so...
And the question for those at home was whether or not the landscaping would extend for future plans?
As long as it's not cleared now, that's fine, you know what I'm saying? But if it's cleared, then we'll be looking at the parking lot as opposed to having a berm behind us. But, the question too was, and if you could take a look at this, this showed the diagonal lines that we thought were gonna be developed, and this one showed that, that it was coming in to here, and all this was diagonal, we thought was gonna be for the, um, school, but this is it, right here, this is the end of it.
Yes, we're not, so, right now, this is one piece, so it's all hatched as one piece.
Oh, so that's...
So, we're, right, we're splitting part of it off.
Oh, okay.
So, this basically through here, wherever that line is...
Good, cause that made a difference, this is us, so that's making a difference if it's here, if it's here, you see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome, thank you. Additional board questions, Steve?
Uh, so, the common drive, or whatever term you used, would be that lot in the one eventually that's built, but not for the very front one on Canton Center, cause that would potentially be a different owner?
The private drive is for all three parcels.
Oh, okay.
Ten.
So, if it's a different owner, they would still be able to use...
What we do is, we have the men are into agreements, uh, amongst one another for, uh, cross-access and for long-term maintenance of that private road.
Great, thank you.
And Anne Marie?
But then, Tim, also, I mean, it's a shared road, but also, it kind of, you kind of have another access through Bush's, Bush's lot also, correct?
No.
That blocked off?
Yep. There's no access, see, this is Bush's right here to the north, so, um, you've got basically a landscaping berm all the way along here, so the only drive is the gray, it's anything that's kind of this lighter white or light gray color, um, this, uh, is a barrier to access between the two sides.
You look, I'm just, and when you look on Google Earth, it looks like it's, um, that drive goes through, I mean, you actually can from that drive going to Bush's now.
No, um, that must, the drive that you're looking at would be this driveway right here at Bush's. There's another drive cut just south of there, uh, it's been there, it was put in when, uh, we rebuilt, uh, Canton Center Road with, uh, the county many years ago.
One thing that we did bring up is, is the concern of that access point, cause all those businesses will just be going out to Canton Center, and that's a really busy time when the parents are picking up kids too, when, when we have rush hour at the same time.
It's better than having multiple points of access.
Tim, there's no requirement for a second entry?
Not on this size site, not on this size site, they'll be able to get in and turn around and, and get out.
In terms of if traffic gets heavy, would, could we reevaluate at some point, maybe opening up the Bush's parking lot to go out another way?
Again, it'd have to be a private agreement between the two private property owners to, uh, basically, you know, do that, to create the cross-access between the two.
None, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, item G four. Thank you. Consider approval of a budget amendment to adjust allocation of time char- charged by the secretary for position shared with DDA.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the listed budget amendment in your board packets.
Second.
I didn't know that was the end.
For a number of years, Municipal Services MSD has shared a secretarial position with DDA. That cost share was typically twenty-five percent MSD and seventy-five percent DDA. Starting in January twenty eighteen, the cost share of the position was changed to fifty percent MSD, fifty percent DDA, as such, budget amendment is necessary to reflect those changes to the budget. The new time allocation is based on increased level of effort by the DDA secretary, or administration's, uh, support there, assisting with the document scanning project and backfilling other clerical vacancies across Municipal Services Division. The total additional cost to the general fund is twenty-one thousand six fifty-nine, including all wages and fringe benefits. Are there any board questions? Just cleaning up the alignment of people and budgets. Seeing none, those in favor of motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G five. Consider approval of an extension to contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation along with the approval of budget amendment for the twenty eighteen sidewalk repair program.
This'll be in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve an extension of the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation for the two thousand eighteen sidewalk repair program in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars, and further authorize yourself, uh, and further authorize the township to sup- to... To further extend the contract with Rotundo Construction Corporation into the twenty nineteen program year based on satisfactory performance and stable prices.
Second. Based on the motion as presented with the detail that was there, combined with the recommendation from the gentleman who retired from Wayne County for Rotundo, and the fact that they did a great job for us last year, are there any additional board comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase revenues, fees, sidewalk replacements, uh, account of two hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars, and increase revenue in the fund balance appropriation from eighty, in amount of eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, and, and increase in expenses to the maintenance and repair sidewalks, uh, fund in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Second. In favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, item G six. Consider approval for Pheasant Run Golf Club security system upgrades.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve security system upgrades to the Pheasant Run Golf Club house with Interstate Security Incorporated at five-one-two-three-three Oro Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan, and four-eight-three-one-five, in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to be paid from the account number listed for capital outlay computers and equipment.
Second.
Good, in summary, um, due to the loss of a couple golf carts in our system, the decision was made to increase security, and we're gonna use Interstate Security, Inc. Are there any board questions or comments? Steven?
Last golf carts were at the other golf cart course, though, are we gonna do anything over there too, or?
All the facilities, but, uh, Steve's question is, is a simple one. Fellows Creek is, are we gonna do some cameras out there as well?
There already, we installed new cameras last summer.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Other board questions or comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Motion carries. G seven. Consider purchase of Toro Green Master mowing units.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of three Toro Green Master three-one-five-zero-Q mowing units from Spartan Distributors Department, uh, nine-five-three-eight, P O Box three-zero-five-one-six in Lansing, Michigan, four-eight-nine-oh-nine, in the amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-six cents, with funds to be taken from, uh, the account number listed, um, Pheasant Run Golf Club, capital outlay machinery and equipment.
Second.
Pheasant Run Golf Course uses many pieces of turf maintenance equipment to maintain the twenty-seven-hole golf course. Three of our current mowers are well beyond their useful life in years, hours of service. We recommend the purchase of three Toro Green Master thirty-one fifty-dash-Q mowing units from Spartan Distributors, and the amount as stated by Clerk Segrist. Is there, are there any board questions or comments?
This was, um, was this done through a bidding process by, by any quest, chance, or? And if so, did Wolverine Distributors? Sorry, I'm getting loopy over here.
You have a bias with the vendor?
Oh, these are, these are purchased through the state of Michigan bid.
Making a joke?
Yep.
Oh, the state green mass, okay, I'm with you. Ah, I got, amazing blue, green state, got it, all right, thank you.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of three Toro Green Master 3150Q mowing units from Spartan Distributors Department, 9538, PO Box 30516 in Lansing, Michigan, 48909 in the amount not to exceed $91,571.46, with funds to be taken from the account number listed, Pheasant Run Golf Club, capital outlay machinery and equipment.
Or.
Pheasant Run Golf Course uses many pieces of turf maintenance equipment to maintain the 27-hole golf course. Three of our current mowers are well beyond their useful life and years, hours of service. We recommend the purchase of three Toro Green Master 3150-Q mowing units from Spartan Distributors in the amount as stated by Clerk Segrist. Are there any board questions or comments?
This was, was this done through a bidding process by, by any quest, chance, or? And if so, did Wolverine Distributors? Sorry, I'm getting loopy over here.
Do you have a bias with the vendor?
These are, these are purchased through the state of Michigan bid.
Making a joke?
Yep.
Oh, the state green, okay, I'm with you.
Ah, I got it.
Amazing blue, green state, got it, all right, thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Where am I, and what am I doing? The, those, are there any additional questions or comments from board? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, item G eight. Consider approval of temporary six-month lease renewal for Human Services Center.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the township supervisor to sign the renewal of the lease with Growth Works for the operation of the Human Services Center for a temporary six-month term beginning March 1, 2018, and ending September 3, 2018.
Second. Summary, this is a three-year lease agreement with Growth Works for the management of the Human Services Center has reached its end. Growth Works manages the day-to-day operations of the building, pays the utilities, and recruits service agencies to rent space in the building. The lease is for $13,893 annually, or $1 per square foot. The rent is kept low because Growth Works passes the savings onto the service agencies to entice them to occupy the building. Building tenants include Canton Community Foundation, Family Service, Inc., Growth Works. Canton uses the rent for major building repairs and to maintain the grounds. The lease is also kept low to avoid triggering, triggering CDBG program income regulations, which would not permit Canton's maintenance of the building and grounds. Currently, Canton staff and Growth Works are negotiating new terms for the management of the building. The terms will include Canton Human Services Center Stakeholders Committee bylaws and the Canton Human Services Center on Project Handbook. Both parties agree to the bylaws and the handbooks, which should be finalized before a new three-year lease agreement is implemented, and therefore, the temporary lease renewal is required to maintain its current leasing terms. The lease will be effective March 1, 2018, and end September 3, 2018, and I believe Clerk Segrist, you had a hand in helping pull together some documentation.
Yeah, the best that I could. Not with regard to the lease, per se, that's more Director Holmberger's venue. However, the bylaws portion and the Human Services Stakeholders Committee and trying to establish the parameters for that organization. I am the board appointee who sits on the Human Services Stakeholder Committee, so that is my role.
Thank you for doing that, and are there any additional board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Consider approval, approving alternate vendor for power stretcher installation, and I think this is a revisit of an item that Josh had brought to us once before.
Okay, Mr., me. My, my PDF keeps defaulting. Okay, there it is. I move to approve switching the vendor for installation of power stretchers from InstaTech LLC to Halt Fire for the same amount of $9,000.
Or.
This is just simply cleaning up the paperwork based on a conversation with the resource. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Consider approving one-year contract for Public Safety Legal Services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move... I move to approve a one-year contract for Public Safety Legal Services with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group in the amount of $25,000 to be, dollars to be paid in monthly installments of $2,083.33.
Public Safety Department is requesting to establish a contract with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group to provide legal advice on administrative and operational issues, department policies, and legal update training for police and fire. The annual contract price is $25,000, which has been stated, is based on 144 man-hours per year. Little more background, last year, the department contracted with the Michigan Police Advisor Group for legal update, training, and policy review. The events, although successful, validated the importance of legal services consultation specific to the police and fire services. In addition to training and policy recommendations, this contract will provide 24/7 access to legal advice for management of all public safety-based scenarios with potential implications such as employee management, critical incidents, as well as legislative action. And I think this is in line with other actions that we've taken as a board the last couple of years, bringing in legal support that are true subject matter experts in a specific area, and this is in addition to that. So, are there any board questions or comments?
Director, just tell us specifically when this would be used versus our own in-house counsel or other counsel?
Yeah, so the, the primary function of this group is really, in, in terms of, as the supervisor said, a subject matter expert, so there's, at least twice a year, we do legal updates with all the police officers, and, and we've now incorporated our fire personnel into that as well, in terms of the HIPAA compliance and other measures. That's always been from an outside legal perspective because of the subject matter expert. This will have some consistency now. We'll be using one group versus a multitude of different attorneys to come in and do that. It also will look at, and we've, we've used, we've been in some conversations with this group in terms of our policies and some of our high-risk policies, looking at use of force policies, et cetera, to make sure that we're compliant with all state and federal guidelines and laws as well.
Go ahead, Dan Ray.
So, when we used the different legal groups last year, how much did that cost for the year? What was the total?
loaded question that you can't ask Josh. I can get you the full detail.
A lot more?
But, no, actually, I, I do a deep dive with Kristen every year on all the legal services we use on the outside, as well as an estimate from the internal, so I can give you the full historical perspective. Josh is not going to know that, nor would Wendy, so I'll get that for you. I'll send it out to the full board. And if you don't see it by Thursday, call me and remind me. Okay. Any additional board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item G 11. Budget amendments for carryover of fiscal year 2017 open purchase orders to fiscal year 2018.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following 2018 budget amendment increases for purchase order commitments carried over from 2017. General Fund 101, increase of $311,656. Fire Fund 206, increase of $30,353. Police Fund 207, an increase of $5,691. Community Center Fund 208, increase of $9,845. Cable TV Fund 230, an increase of $126,853. Community Improvement Fund 246, an increase of $104,340. Capital Projects Water and Sewer Fund 402, an increase of $657. Capital Projects Roads 403, an increase of $80,525. Goal, Golf Course Fund 584, an increase of $62,735. Water and Sewer Fund 592, an increase of $2,098, whoa, $2,098,120, apologize. And then Fleet Maintenance Fund 661, an increase of $8,831.
Second. As stated in the motion, this is just a cleanup of the books. Dollars not spent and budgeted in 2017 now being lifted up and put into 2018 budgets. Are there any additional board comments or questions? We're cleaning up the paperwork.
Is this a typical amount that transfers between budget years, or is this larger than normal?
I haven't looked back at previous years, but we do set a threshold of how much we allow carried over. We don't typically, unless it's an ongoing project that we're just trying to wrap up, you know, there's one that has $657, typically, we wouldn't allow something so small to be carried over unless you're talking one more bill's coming in from a project that has been ongoing that we just haven't wrapped up yet. Otherwise, we have a minimum threshold, it's got to be something that's over $5,000. It, it really just depends, the timing of when things are purchased, and what kind of projects we have ongoing. So the, the types of items on the list are normal-type items, nothing really unusual.
Water is a different animal.
Water's always a different animal.
Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, item G 12. Resolution in support of accountability for county roads and funding needs for state infrastructure investment.
Mr.
Kind of ties into our discussion, roads versus sidewalks.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Canton, a resolution in support of accountability for county roads and funding needs for state infrastructure investment. Whereas officials are elected in 1,240 townships to represent more than half of all Michigan residents and are responsible for the majority of economic development occurring in Michigan, and whereas local officials are the most responsive to residents and are most knowledgeable about the needs of their constituents, and whereas Canton Township has spent in excess of $10 million out of the general fund over the last decade on over 208 miles of neighborhood roads and 59 miles of county primary roads, and whereas the Michigan Transportation Fund Act, Public Act 51 of 1951, created a formula to distribute transportation funds for road repair and maintenance amongst governmental units with jurisdiction over roads, and whereas townships have no jurisdiction over public roads, receive no direct funding from Public Act 51, and are serviced through their respective county, and whereas Public Act 51 of 1951 creates no accountability mechanism to ensure that revenue generated for use inside a township is returned to the jurisdiction and services, and whereas the Governor's 21st Century Infrastructure Commission recognizes that Michigan invests less in state and local capital spending than the national average, and 2.5 billion per year less than the surrounding Great Lakes states, and whereas the commission identified an infrastructure investment gap of $4 billion annually, an amount not covered by additional revenues from the $600 million state fuel tax and registration fee increases of 2015, taking effect in 2021, and potential $600 million state budget surplus appropriation for future road maintenance, now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees for the Charter Township of Canton supports legislation ensuring accountability for road, for county road commissions and public works divisions on, on public Act 51 expenditures within townships, and be it further resolved that the, the board supports the establishment of a township fund to be created within Act 51 to be spent with township input, and be it further resolved that the board supports the governor's proposed increase of $175 million in transportation funding for the 2019 state budget, recognizing that the infrastructure gap will still be greater than 2.5 billion after 2020, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Representative Noble, Representative Pagan, Senator Colbeck, Governor Snyder, and the Michigan Townships Association.
Okay.
Good. The resolution clearly speaks for itself. Clerk Segrist dug into some old records back 2014, dusted off a prior resolution that was in the same vein, and very smartly updated it to today's situation and circumstances, and I almost wish that the, the crew that was in here on the sidewalks would have heard this before they got out. Is, it's, it's an expression of, of all of the trustees frustration, I believe, and it needs to be communicated that we're not satisfied with where we're, where we're sitting today.
I just want to say that I think we all hear from residents all the time about the, the condition of our roads, and they want more done, and I've learned a lot serving on the Roads Task Force, and we are doing good work, and I think we will be finishing that work up soon, and I'm looking forward to giving a report to this body. And, you know, I'm glad that the legislature appropriated $175 million last week for roads, but I think we need to see more of an investment in our infrastructure across the state, particularly in townships.
I would just say that I'm looking forward to being able to take some actions on roads after we get the Roads Commission report, so I'm interested in starting that work. One question I have is Clerk Segrist, the 2.5 billion per year less than the surrounding Great Lakes states, that means we're less than any of the surrounding Great Lakes states by 2.5 billion dollars in funding per year?
The information that was used came from Director Foss through the, the task force itself, and when you look, when you apply the per capita number to population, yes, that is the case. If you look at the front page of this week's cranes, it will show per capita what states and nationally people spend on, on roads. I believe in Pennsylvania, it is, I believe, $560, and in Michigan, it is $185 per person.
Wow.
If you drive on Pennsylvania roads and you drive on Michigan roads, you will begin to see, ah, Director Trumble has the cranes, that's the beautiful detail right there.
What are we, 41st in funding for roads?
In the bottom 10.
It says that we spend $154 per capita on roads, and Pennsylvania's 530 per capita. It says $865 average cost per Metro Detroit motorist for maintenance linked to poor road conditions, and 377 for the national average for the same.
Yeah. So...
You on it?
Yeah, I just, you know, in looking through old resolutions, came across one that the previous, previous boards from 1997 had supported. I think, one, being a township, we, and being a township with the largest county is a challenge, with Wayne County being so big and having so many needs. I mean, I think the first stretch of paved road was in Wayne County, if I'm not mistaken, or at least in southeast Michigan, so we've got really, really old infrastructure, and Act, Public Act 51 does not create enough revenue, nor does it distribute it efficiently, so that was an issue, that there's no real accountability measure when it comes to the money that is created by the county, and that it is, in fact, spent inside of townships. So I thought that those were some, some ways to, to update that. We've also got significantly more road than we did when the, in 1997, like a lot more road than we did in 1997, but, yeah, it's not a, it's not a Canton problem, it's not a, it's not even a Wayne County problem, it's, it's not even a Michigan problem. I think nationally, federal highway funds probably could be questioned that we don't spend enough on infrastructure in general, but I was very disheartened to see that when you take what we currently spend, you know, the Governor's Task Force is saying that we need to spend $4 billion more annually just to meet our needs, and the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets to do this stuff. So, previous generations have left us with a pretty big obligation. It's time to get to work.
Comments?
Thanks for putting it together.
Yeah, thanks for putting it together.
That was good news.
That's true.
Public comment, sir? Got it?
Yep, we can do that.
The, the request was to have the resolution sent to the Roads Task Force, and it looks like Trustee Foster is going to do that.
Front page of the paper, too.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That's the last formal item on the agenda tonight. Public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? Emery?
I just want to say, based on a lot of the things that have happened over the last week, I mean, the Canton Police Department's done a great job. I know we had a soft lockdown at the high school. My son and his friends were telling me about it, I mean, it was a very somber situation. I know that you guys were, you were there, my son had gone out, the kids were locked in the room for two hours, and my son had gone out to use the bathroom, they gave him a pass, and he said how the police were everywhere, and he was escorted, so they were safety. And then, I also understand that my daughter, at Liberty, they had a drill today, a lockdown drill, where you guys were present, so thank you, and thanks for keeping our kids safe, and, I mean, it's scary situations out there right now.
Between bank robberies and schools, you got your hands full, Director.
Seeing no other board comment, call for motion to adjourn. So moved? Favor of adjournment of the meeting, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, all. Be safe.